Hare Rama Eva Kebalam and then we will also sing Jyani Lo Prema Dhanam wherein we are expressing our separation from a pure devotee of the Lord begging for his mercy. And then we will, we will do beyond birth and death, the second chapter. We'll try to read as much as possible and then we'll end with Hari Nam Sangkirtan. So that is the schedule for today. So let's quickly now move on to chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Namom Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shrimate Eje Pataka Swami Nidhi Naamine. Namum Acharya Paadhaaya Nitaayi Kripa Pradhainay Gauratthada Madhaya Nagragrahama Dharinay. Namom Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Nidhi Naamine. Maste Sarasvade Devay Gauravani Pracharinay Nirvisesh Shunyavadi Aschati Deetshatari Ne. Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda Shri Advaita Radha Rishi Vasagor Bhaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare, Hare. Haridasa Thakur. 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 Haridasa Thakur.
Mahaprasadam and Prabhupada writes in this report, oh Mahaprasadam is non-different from Lord Sri Krishna. And then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu immediately when he heard this, that Haridasa Thakur was actually lying down, he's not had prasadam. He just had a little bit, just to honor the prasadam, but he's not finished his rounds, he's not eating anything. Immediately, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu went to inquire about Haridasa Thakur in his. Um, Aradina Mahaprabhu, Tara Thani Ayala, Sushtha Hawo Haridasa Bali Ta Re Puchila. So next day only Chaitanya Mahaprabhu went to Haridasa's place and inquired, Haridasa, are you well? Hmm, because the previous day Govinda must have gone and told Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, this is the state of Haridasa Thakur. So in this way, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu personally came to inquire from Haridasa. Namaskara Kari Te Ho Kailani Vedana, Sharira Sushtha Haya Amora, Sushtha Buddhi Mana. So this is the consciousness of a pure devotee. He's saying, my body is alright, but my mind and intelligence are not well. Why? Can you ascertain what the disease is? Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was asking. Prabuka He Konavya Di Kahata Nirnaya, Te Ho Ka He Sangkya Kiratanana Puraya. Right? And then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was asking, what kind of disease have you got? This is not the disease of the body, but of the mind and intelligence you're saying. And Haridasa Thakur is saying, my disease is that, I cannot complete my rounds. Prabuka He Vridha Hayla Sangkya Alpakara Siddha Deha Tumi Saadhane Aagraha Ke Nekara. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was saying, oh Haridasa Thakur, you've become old. You may reduce the number of rounds you chant daily, you're already liberated. You need not follow the regular principles so strictly. Loca Nistari Te Ei Tomara Vatara, Namira Mahima Loke Karila Prachara. So you have come in this incarnation as Haridasa Thakur, born in the low family, is to preach the glories of the holy name to the world and you've done adequately enough, you've sufficiently preached the holy name. Now you're old, you don't have to chant the fixed namams of chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra now. Hmm, and then what does, what does our Haridasa Thakur say? Hmm, Ashriya Abshriya More Angikara Kaila, Roura Vahite Kadi More Vai Kunta Chadaila. I am unseeable, I am untouchable, why? Because I am born in the lowest of the family, I am born in inferior family, my body is very abominable. Yet, you have Angikara Kaila, you have recognized me as your servant. Roura Vahaite Kadi More Vai Kunta Chadaila. You've raised me to the Vai Kunta platform, whereas I am actually born in the lower, than a lower family, in an inferior position. Yet because of your mercy, you've raised me to such a high level. And then again he's saying Swatantra Ishvara Tumi Hawo Icha Maya Jagatana Chao Ya Re Icha Icha Haya. Oh Lord, you are the supreme personality of Godhead, you cause the whole world to dance according to your whims and fancies. Hmm, but I was offered the Shraddha Patra, which should be offered to first-class Brahmanas. I ate from it even though I was born in a family of meat eaters. So Chaitanya Mahaprabhu saying that Haridasa Thakur would actually not go into the, to the Jagannath, Jagannath temple. Ah personally, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu ensured that the Shraddha Patra was offered in the name of Haridasa Thakur. And that is what was the prasadam that was given to Haridasa Thakur. So Haridasa Thakur took a little bit of that prasadam. In this way, I had a long desire, Haridasa Thakur was saying, right? I have a long desire that, that before you end your leela, oh Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, I want to, I want to give up my body. Let me, let my body fall down in your presence. Se Leela Prabhu More Kabuna Dekhaiba, Apa Nara Age Mora Sharira Pa Diva. Right? Let my body fall down in your presence. I wish to catch your lotus-like feet upon my heart and see your moon-like face. This is the desire of Haridasa Thakur, similar to the desire of Bishma Pitamha. What does he say? Hridayata Rimo Tomar Kamala Charana, Nayane Dekhi Mu Tomar Chandava Dhana. Let me look at your lotus face and with my tongue, I want to chant your holy name. Jivaya Ucharimu Tomar Krishna Chaitanya Nama, Ei Mata Moraicha Charimu Parana. This is my desire, I want to look at your lotus face, I want to chant your holy name, Sri Krishna Chaitanya. In this way, I want to give up my body kindly, grant my desire. You are, you are all in all, you are the supreme personality of Godhead, you will be able to satisfy my desire. What does Chaitanya Mahaprabhu say? Prabuka He Haridasa Ei Tumi Magibe Krishna Gripa Maya Tahavasya Karibe. Right? Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying, oh my dear Haridasa, Krishna is very merciful and Krishna fulfills the desire of all his devotees. So he may execute what you want. You want to, you want to go back before me, you're depriving me of your association. Hmm, but then I know that Krishna will definitely fulfill your wish. Hmm, and then catching at the lotus feet of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Haridasa Thakur is saying, I'm so, I'm so fallen. So please you show me this mercy, let me look at your lotus feet and let me leave my body anyways, I've become very old, like that, he's begging Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying, oh you're, you're, you want to leave and not give me your association. Like the conversation between Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and Haridasa Thakur goes on. Hmm, and then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he performs his noon duties and he gets up to leave. Then he saw that, now he would, he would go to Jagannatpuri Dham, have Darshan of the ladies and then he'll come back to visit Haridasa Thakur, because Chaitanya Mahaprabhu understood that Haridasa Thakur was going to leave his body anytime soon. Madhyana Karite Prabhu Chalila Apane Ishwar Adhe Kiyakali Di Bena Darshane. Tabbe Mahaprabhu Ta Re Kalia Lingana Madhyana Karite Samudre Karila Gamana. Right? And in this way, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu embraced Haridasa Thakur and then he performed, to perform his noon duties, went to see Jagannath, Jagannatpuri Ocean, to take his bath. And the next day morning, he took Darshan of Jagannath and then immediately went to see Haridasa Thakur. Harida Sera Age Ashidi La Darshana, Harida Savandila Prabhu Rara Vaishnava Charana. So Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, the devotees came before Haridasa Thakur. Haridasa Thakur offered his respects to the lotus feet of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and all the Vaishnavas. And Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was asking Haridasa, what is the news? And Haridasa Thakur is saying, whatever is your mercy, right? Now he's, he just expresses desire once and then he's left it to Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Whatever is your desire, please be merciful unto me. Upon hearing this, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu immediately said, everybody start chanting Hare Krishna. And Bakreshwara Pandit was the chief dancer who started dancing. Angane Arinbala Prabhu Mahasankirtana, Bakreshwara Pandita Tahakare Na Narthana. In this way, Swarup Damodar Goswami, all of them started chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, surrounded Haridasa Thakur with the congregational chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. And in this way, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu himself started chanting and Chaitanya Mahaprabhu seemed to possess five mouths because he wanted to chant more and more for the pleasure of Haridasa Thakur. Harida Sere Gune Sabharavismita Haya Mana Sarva Bhakti Vandeh Harida Sera Charana. So all the Vaishnavas who were there, they were all struck with wonder. They saw, they saw the glory of Haridasa Thakur, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was personally coming and doing Harinam Sangkirtan. And the way he is chanting Harinam is like five mouths are there with him. In this way, he is dancing in ecstasy and Haridasa Thakur immediately sat down in front of him and he started looking at the lotus face of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Haridasani Jagrete Prabhu Re Vasaila, Necha Netre Du Ibranga Mukha Padma Dilaa. Right? The lotus face of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Haridasa Thakur saw. Hmm, and he held the lotus feet of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu in his heart, took the dust of the feet of all the devotees present, put it on his head. Hmm, in this way, he was planning to prepare to leave his body. Sri Krishna Chaitanya Shabda Balena Bhaara Bhaara, Prabhu Mukha Madhuri Pe Netra Jaladhara, Netra Jaladhara. Means his eyes, tears are flowing down from his eyes, Prabhu Mukha Madhuri Pe. And he was drinking the sweetness of the Lord, now by looking at his lotus face and began to chant the holy name of Sri Krishna Chaitanya again and again. Ah Sri Krishna Chaitanya Shabda Balena Bhaara Bhaara, again and again. He was chanting the names of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And in this way, as he was chanting the holy names of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he gave up his air of life and left his body. Sri Krishna Chaitanya Shabda Karite Ucharana. In this way, by pronouncing the names of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu again and again. Namira Sahita Pranava Kaila Ukramana. In this way, his life force or his soul left his body. Mahayogishvara Praya Deki Swachande Marana, Bishmi Raniriana Sabar Hayla Smaran. Everyone thought of the passing away of Bishma Dev, Bishma Dev had this Icham Ritu, he wanted to, he looked at the lotus face of Krishna before he departed the world, as he was departing the world, he wanted to look at the lotus face of Krishna. And Haridasa Thakur got the same benediction, looking at the lotus face of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, offering his obeisances, taking the dust of the lotus feet of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, chanting Hare Krishna, chanting Sri Krishna Chaitanya Nama, the holy name of Lord Chaitanya, in this way he left his body. At the same time, all the devotees were doing congregational, tumultuous chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. And then what did the Lord do? The Lord personally picked up Haridasa Thakur, placed him on his lap and then he began to dance in the courtyard. There is a beautiful picture that is there, which I think I had sent it also along with this invite for this program. Right? That is the way Chaitanya Mahaprabhu personally carried Haridasa Thakur. Right? After placing him in his lap, he was doing in Kiratan. Harida Sera Tannu Prabhu Kolle Laila Uthana, Anga Nena Chena Prabhu Prema Vishtha Haya. So in this way, all the devotees, we were all dancing in ecstatic love, seeing Chaitanya Mahaprabhu personally carrying Haridasa Thakur and dancing for some time. And then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, as he was chanting and all the devotees were chanting behind him, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu took the body of Haridasa Thakur to, to Jagannatpuri, the ocean in Jagannatpuri, personally bathed the body of Haridasa Thakur. And then he said, this sea has become a great pilgrimage site. Why? Because it has bathed the body of Haridasa Thakur. Harida Se Samudra Jale Snanaka Raila, Prabuka He Samudra Ei Mahatiirta Hayla. This place has become Mahatiirta, why? Because it has got the fortune of bathing the body of Haridasa Thakur. Harida Sera Padoda Kpe Bhaktagana, Harida Sera Ange Dilaprasada Chandana. So everyone drank the water that detects the lotus feet of Haridasa Thakur. They smear the remnants of Jagannath sandalwood pulp over Haridasa Thakur's body. So in this way, a hole was dug in the sand, Haridasa Thakur's body was placed into it and all of the remnants of Lord Jagannath, like a silicon rope, sandalwood pulp, food and cloth. Everything was placed on Haridasa Thakur's body, all the devotees continued to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Someone was chanting Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Someone else was chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. In this way, the devotees covered the body of Haridasa Thakur and Chaitanya Mahaprabhu bathed in the same sea with the devotees after the final rites of Haridasa Thakur is done. Hmm, and then he was playing in the ocean of Jagannatpuri. And then later on, what did he do? Chaitanya Mahaprabhu started begging, begging for arms so that he could arrange a big prasadam distribution in honor of Haridasa Thakur, what does he say? Harida Seta Kurera Mahotsaveera Tare Prasadam Agiya Biksha Tehata Amare. Like a sanyasi, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was a sanyasi, so he's going out begging arms so that he can prepare and prepare a wonderful festival for the disappearance of Haridasa Thakur. And begging prasadam for a festival honoring the passing away of Haridasa Thakur, the Lord said, please give me arms. So when, when Chaitanya Mahaprabhu personally went and asked, all the shopkeepers gave, came big, big, big baskets of various bogah. Swarup Damodar stopped them and he said, okay, you can, you go back because there was no place. Everybody was bringing so much, there was no place there. And then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he went back to his residence and captured them four Vaishnavas and four servant carriers. Hmm, they were all carrying palmfuls of prasadam from each and every item, right? All of the shopkeepers were bringing more and more and more and in this way, lot of prasadam got collected. Hmm, and they were carried by the four servants. And then Swarup Damodar Goswami brought prasadam, Vaninath and Kashi Mishra also sent large quantities of wonderful prasadam. And what did Chaitanya Mahaprabhu do? Chaitanya Mahaprabhu personally distributed prasadam to all the devotees. He asked them to sit in a row, he therefore put a lot of prasadam in everyone's plate, right? Because when we are happy generally what we do, we have a lot of prasadam, right? Because we're feeling ecstatic, so all the devotees were feeling very happy. Hmm, and then they were sitting in rows and Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was personally distributing prasadam. So they all had nice wonderful Krishna prasadam. Hmm, and then Kashi Mishra, yeah, he personally went and delivered prasadam to Chaitanya Mahaprabhu also. He said, all of the Vaishnavas are served, now I want you to eat prasadam. So in this way, everybody was having prasadam and Chaitanya Mahaprabhu asked them, give them more, give all the Vaishnavas more and more prasadam. Like that everyone was filled up to the neck, eating the nice wonderful prasadam in the honor of Haridasa Thakur. And then overwhelmed with ecstatic love, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu offered a benediction to all the devotees, which all the devotees heard with great satisfaction, what is that? Prema Vishtha Haya Prabhu Kare Na Varadhana, Shuni Bhaktaganaera Judaya Manasakama. Harida Sera Vijayot Sava Ei Kaila Darshana, Ei Ha Nritya Kaila Ei Kaila Kirthana. Ei Tareva Lu Ka Di Te Karila Gamana, Tara Madde Ma Ho Tsave Kaila Bojana. Achi Ra Hai Betasa Para Krishna Prapti, Harida Sa Darashane Haye Aij Shakti. Anyone who has seen the festival of Haridasa Thakur, passing away, anyone who's chanted and danced here, anyone who's offered sand on the body of Haridasa Thakur, anyone who's joined this festival to partake the prasadam, will achieve the favor of Krishna very soon. This is the wonderful power in seeing Haridasa Thakur. So all of us who are hearing, who are actually living this pastime of how Chaitanya Mahaprabhu carried Haridasa Thakur, bathed him in the ocean of Jagannatpuri, organized a very nice wonderful festival in the honor of Haridasa Thakur's passing away, offered prasadam, distributed prasadam to all the devotees. In this way, they are also taking part in this wonderful festival of Haridasa Thakur. Grippakari Krishna More Diya Chila Sangha Swatantra Krishnaera Icha Kaila Sangha Banga. Being merciful upon me, Krishna gave me the association of Haridasa Thakur. This is the mode of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is Krishna himself, yet he is saying that hmm, because of the mercy of Krishna, I got the association of Haridasa Thakur. But Krishna is supremely independent, now he has broken that association because Haridasa Thakur gave up his life and he went away. Hmm, but it was such a glorious departure. And he says, Haridasa Thakur was a crown jewel on the head of the world. Without him, the world is now bereft of its valuable jewel. Right? Then Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu told everyone, all glory to Haridasa Thakur, everybody chant the holy name of Hari like this. Jaya Jaya Haridasa Bali Kara Hari Dwani, Etta Bali Mahaprabhu Nachina Apani. Saying this, he began to dance in Kiratan, everyone began to chant, all glory to Haridasa Thakur. Who revealed the importance of chanting the holy name of the Lord. Sabegaya Jaya 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 Haridasa, Namira Mahima Yena Karila Prakash, very beautiful. Namira Mahima Yena Karila Prakash, the glories of the holy name were actually brought out by Haridasa Thakur. Tabbe Mahaprabhu Sapa Bhakti Vidha Ya Dilaa Harsha Vi Shade Prabhu Vishrama Karila. And Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, after dancing in ecstasy and asking everyone to sing the glories of Haridasa Thakur, he bade farewell to all the devotees and he had mixed feelings of happiness and distress. Why happiness? Happiness because Haridasa Thakur had such a glorious passing away. He saw the lotus face of the Lord and then he got such a nice celebration, huh, because where Vaishnavas are chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra in jubilance, in ecstasy, what better passing away can a person even think of, right? And the Lord is personally present, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is personally present. And this is why, he's saying Krishna has now taken away the association of, of Haridasa Thakur. Now, our fellow Shruti. Etaka Helu Harida Sera Vijaya, Yahar Ashravanay Krishna Drida Bhakti Haya. Das I have spoken, who's spoken? Shri Krishna Dasa Kaviraj Goswami, this is Chaitanya Chari Kamrat. Yes, I have spoken about the victorious passing away of Haridasa Thakur. Anyone who hears this narration, all of us will certainly fix his mind firmly in devotional service to Lord Sri Krishna. So this is the glory of hearing about a pure devotee of the Lord. Hmm, and in this way, we can see how much Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was affectionate towards his devotees, how he personally bathed Haridasa Thakur, personally danced with, danced with the body of Haridasa Thakur, personally celebrated a grand festival to celebrate the passing away of Haridasa Thakur. And then Mahabagavat Harida Saparama Vidvan, Esavagya Lagi Age Karila Prayan. Haridasa Thakur was not only the topmost devotee of the Lord, but also a great and learned scholar. It was his great fortune that he passed away before Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Chaitanya Charitra Ei Amriteras Indu Karnamana Tritta Kare Yaara Ekabindu. So in this way, whoever hears the wonderful pastimes of Haridasa Thakur, especially the pastimes of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu in relation to Haridasa Thakur, will get pure devotional service under the lotus feet of Lord Sri Krishna. So all of the eighteen devotees here, huh, will, we will have determination and faith in chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Because we've heard the pastimes of Haridasa Thakur. We've heard how Chaitanya Mahaprabhu celebrated the auspicious disappearance of Haridasa Thakur. Praying at the lotus feet of Sri Rupa and Ragunath, always desiring their mercy, hi Krishna Dasa. Narayana Sri Chaitanya Chari Kamrat are falling in their footsteps. So this is a beautiful chapter, describes the passing of Haridasa Thakur, so we quickly finished it. Oh, it's time is already one fifty, but it's fine. So the glories of Haridasa Thakur, how much ever long it takes, right? This is just scratching, scratching the tip of the iceberg, right? Anyone who hears, so when we chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra more and more today, right? Some of us have taken sankalpa of sixty-four rounds chanting, some of us thirty-two, some of us hundred and eight. How many ever rounds of sankalpa we've taken? The more we engage in devotional service, the more we chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra, the more we will access the mercy of Haridasa Thakur. When we access the mercy of Haridasa Thakur, what else is remaining in this life? By simply pleasing Haridasa Thakur, we will please Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Namachary Shri Haridasa Thakur Ki Jaye, and it's also the holy name week, right? Um, Hareer Nam, Hareer Nam, Hareer Nam Ayiva Kevalam Kalonasteva, Nasteva, Nasteva Gati Raniyata. There are so many Vedic praman, Vedic scriptures, they're talking about how in the age of Kali, it is only by the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra that we can attain Krishna prema. And the one person who actually perfected his life by chanting Hare Krishna is Namacharya, Shri Haridasa Thakur. And we see how much he pleased Chaitanya Mahaprabhu because he performed yoga dharma for this age of Kali and he easily pleased Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. So the more we chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. The more we will please Haridasa Thakur, the more we please Haridasa Thakur, the more we will develop all the good qualities, right? I was just asked his, his holiness Vanamali Maharaj. So Vanamali Maharaj, I was asking him in the class, how do we develop humility? Because Chaitanya Mahaprabhu says Stranathapishuni Chena Taroriva Sahishnuna, Amani Namana Dena Kirthaniya Sadah Hari. Hmm, then Maharaj told that we should always remember Haridasa Thakur as we are chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra daily during our Brahma Murtha chanting. We should always think of Haridasa Thakur, Namachary Shri Haridasa Thakur Ki Jaye, right? Then Namachary Haridasa Thakur, what he will, he will do? He will enable us to chant more rounds of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. He will enable us to chant better quality rounds, quantity and quality. Haridasa Thakur will bless us so that we can chant better quality rounds and more quantity rounds. And by the mercy of Haridasa Thakur, we will get Krishna prema. And how will we get Krishna prema? Because Haridasa Thakur will bless us with humility, right? We know the quality of humility that Haridasa Thakur, right? Even though old age, although, although being a pure devotee of the Lord, he was expressing his humility. Oh Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, my body is fine, but my mind and intelligence are not working properly because I'm not able to chant Hare Krishna. This was his humility and conviction in the holy name, discussing this pastime, how Chaitanya, how Haridasa Thakur, uh, you know the Navab, hmm, they, he sends two people to kill Haridasa Thakur or to beat him in twenty-six marketplaces. And in this way, Haridasa Thakur was not dying. And then, um, and then they told him that, you know, either you stop chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra or you have to die. And Haridasa Thakur said, I prefer to die rather than stop chanting Hare Krishna. So our conviction and deep conviction to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra as the only, um, as the only potent method to attain Krishna prema, we will get that conviction by the blessing of Haridasa Thakur. We will develop compassion, Haridasa Thakur. Hmm, actually, when, when Haridasa Thakur was, was chanting, then actually Ramachandra Khan actually sent one prostitute to Haridasa Thakur. And Haridasa Thakur, he was compassionate even to this prostitute who came to actually get him ill fame, right? But Haridasa Thakur did not dissuade her, right? He knew everything, but yet he called that lady, he said, you sit here, once I finish my regular prescribed rounds of chanting, then I will satisfy your desire. And in this way, three days and three nights, hmm, that lady was sitting with Haridasa Thakur. Haridasa Thakur continued chanting, next day morning that lady will say, oh, oh, you know, Haridasa Thakur would tell the lady, oh, I could not satisfy your desire yesterday because I had not completed my rounds, but you come back in the evening today, I will definitely satisfy your desire today after completing my rounds. In this way, after three nights of being in the association of Haridasa Thakur, who was chanting in front of Tulsi Maharani, hmm, the prostitute's heart got changed and she offered obeisances to Haridasa Thakur and told him that I actually came to cause you ill fame, but I now got purified. And Haridasa Thakur said, Haridasa Thakur left that place saying, you start chanting. And that lady was a prostitute, he, she distributed all of her wealth, she gave up everything. She came and started chanting three hundred thousand times the holy names of the Lord by the mercy of Haridasa Thakur. So this is the compassion of Haridasa Thakur. And then tolerance, right? The tolerance, we also see how he was beaten up in twenty-six marketplaces. Yet, because he thought he was causing inconvenience to all those people who were trying to kill him, he jumped into the ganga. He didn't want to cause them any trouble, so he tolerated them, he's compassionate, uh, he is the, he has the conviction about the chanting of the holy name and he can benedict us with the blessing of Kirthaniya Sadah Hari. So when we remember Haridasa Thakur during our chanting and we pray for his blessings, then some said there, Harito Shanam. Everything will be perfect if we please a pure devotee of the Lord. Because when we please a pure devotee, the Lord is automatically pleased. Chagat Guru Shri La Propaad Ki Jaye Kaligavati Tapavana. Hare Krishna Mahamantra Ki Jaye Namachary Shri Haridasa Thakur Ki Jaye. So with this, we will just complete, hmm, what can we describe in one hour, half an hour, right? The glories of Haridasa Thakur, uh, like Anantashesh tells, right? I cannot describe the glories of Krishna. Even Anantashesh cannot describe the glories of the Lord and his devotees. What can we speak in one hour with one mouth, right? There's so much to the glories of Haridasa Thakur, but we can understand it simply by pleasing Haridasa Thakur, especially today. Hmm, we can please Lord Sri Krishna, we can get taste in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Chagat Guru Shri La Propaad Ki Jaye. So now we'll sing these two beautiful songs. Um, what are these two songs that we will sing today? Uh, one is the song that we sing expressing our separation from, um, a pure devotee of the Lord, Haridasa Thakur, Janilo Prema Dhan. But before that, we'll also sing Kevala Ashtakam. Kevala Ashtakam is surrendering to the holy name of the Lord. There is no other shelter, there is no other shelter, there is no other shelter than the holy names of the Lord. Hareer Nam Ayiva Kevalam, there is no other shelter than the holy names of the Lord. So first we will sing Madhuram Madhuree Byopi, right? This is, this is called Kevala Ashtakam. Uh, every last line of this song ends with, uh, Hareer Nam Ayiva Kevalam. So this is what we want to depend completely on, hmm, that we want to depend on the holy names of the Lord and nothing else, right? So we'll, let's quickly sing these beautiful songs and then we will do, we will read Beyond Birth and Death and then we will do Harinam Sangkirtan. So by two fifteen, I think we should be able to wind up the session.
Madhuram Madhuree Byopi, Mangali Byopi Mangalam. Avanam Paavane Byopi. Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam, Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Adham Astampa Prajyantam, Sarvam Maya Mayaam Jaga. Satyam Satyam Punasatyam. Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Taguro Sapita Chaapi, Tamata Bandavo Pisaha. Icha Ye Chet Sada Smardum. Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Niishva Sena Hiishva Sa, Adharudha Babishati. Pirthaniya Madho Bhalya. Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam, Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Hari Sadha Vasetatra, Yatra Bhaga Bhata Jana. Rayanti Bhakti Bhavena, Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Aho Dukkam Mahadukka, Dukka Dukka Taram Yataha. Kachartam Dismritam Bratna, Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Diya Tam Diya Tam Karno, Niya Tam Niya Tam Vacha. Niya Tam Diya Tam Uja, Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Dini Kritya Jagad Sarvam, Rajate Satalo Parii. Idananda Maya Sudha. Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam, Hare Nam Ayiva Kevalam. Hare Nam Ayva Kevalam.
Are namai va kevalam, are namai va kevalam. Are namai va kevalam, are namai va kevalam. Are namai va kevalam, are namai va kevalam. So this beautiful song talks about how we just need to take shelter of the holy names of the Lord and then everything else will follow. Because the holy name of Sri Hari is everything. Everything stems, all of, all of the bliss and all of the taste in chanting Hare Krishna, everything will stem simply when we chant, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Sri Hari Nam Prabhu Ki Jai Kaligapati Padhavana, Hare Krishna Mahamantra Ki Jai Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Now we will sing this beautiful song wherein, wherein this song is sung every day, whenever it is the tirubhakti di or the disappearance of any Vaishnavahacharya. Then the song which is written by Norakamda Thakur, this is from the book called Prarthana. This song is sung expressing our feelings of separation from a Vaishnavah. Because sadhusanga sadhusanga sarva shastra khaya, lava ma prasadhusanga sarva siddhi khaya. Right? Whenever a Vaishnavah departs, the devotees cry with all their heart. Why? Because we are not going to have the association of such an exalted Vaishnavah. So in this mood, let us sing this beautiful song expressing separation to Haridasa Thakur and begging for his mercy that maybe get taste in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra and perfect our lives. Neeyani lo prema ghanna karuna prachu. Heno prabhu, o thagela, acharya thaakho. Aha murah swaru rup, aha sanata. Kaha da kara gu na tha patita pava. Aha murah bhatta juva, aha kavira. Ekakale o thagela, koranathara. Ashani kuti bo matah, anale pasibo. Gauranga juva mera, nidi o thagela paabo. Se sabe sangira sangre, rokoi loa bhila. Se sangana paya kande, narota madha ka. Se saba sangira sangre, rokoi loa bhila. Se sangana paya kande, narota madha ka. Neeyani lo prema ghanna karuna prachu. Heno prabhu, o thagela, jarya thaakho. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Neeyani lo prema ghanna karuna prachu. Heno prabhu, o thagela, jarya thaakho. Jaya acharya thaakor jaya, vaishnavah Thakur jaya, vaishnavah Thakur jaya. Jaya Prabhu Paad, jaya Prabhu Paad, jaya Guru Deva, Shri La Guru Deva Nitaai. Gauri Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Namacharya Haridasa Thakur Kirabha Mahamohut Sava Ki Jai Ho, Anandakoji Vaishnavah Vrind Ki Jai Ho, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Hare Krishna. So now let's quickly go on to our regular agenda, which is studying of Beyond Birth and Death. So we are on, we are going to start chapter number two today. Yeah. So we will start chapter number two, which is entitled Elevation at Death. Okay. So devotees can raise your hands and then we will start. Yeah, Leelandandri Madaji, start. Elevation at Death. Jagadguru Shri La Propaad Ki Jai. Yes, master.
Hare Krishna Madaji Dandatpranam. Chapter two, chapter two, elevation at death. There are different kinds of transcendentalists who are called yogis, hada yogis, jnana yogis, dhyana yogis and bhakti yogis. And all of them are eligible to be transferred to the spiritual world. The word yoga means to link up and the yoga systems are meant to enable us to link with the transcendental world. As mentioned in the previous chapter, originally we are all connected to the Supreme Lord, but now we have been affected by material condemnation. The condemnation, the process is that we have to return to the spiritual world and that process of linking up is called yoga. Another meaning of the word yoga is plus. At the present moment, we are minus God or minus the Supreme. When we add Krishna or God to our lives, this human form of life becomes perfect.
Hare Krishna, thank you.
Hare Krishna Madaji Dandatpranam.
Dandatpranam. So it's very, isn't it very auspicious that we are looking at elevation at death on the auspicious day of Haridasa Thakur's disappearance, right? This is the mercy of the Lord, right? How? By simply connecting with a devotee, by simply connecting yoga means actually connecting, linking up. That process is yoga. When we link ourselves with the Supreme Lord, by linking ourselves with the Guru Parampara, we link ourselves with the Vaishnavas, then we perfect our human form of life, very simple formula, right? At the time of death, right? We will quickly read three people and then we will finish, yes? Sindhu Madaji Go ahead.
At the time of death. At the time of death, we have to finish that process of perfection. During our lifetime, we have to practice the method of approaching that perfection so that at the time of death, when we have to give up this material body, that perfection can be realized.
Thank you Madaji, Hare Krishna. This is what we saw in the life of Haridasa Thakur. He perfected his life by chanting three hundred thousand names of the Lord. Even when the Lord said, you don't have to chant Haridasa Thakur, right? Yet he wanted to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra because he wanted to please Krishna. Trae nakale manasaachalena, bhaktiya yuktayoga velena chayva. Bruvor baddye pranam avisha samya, satam param purusham paiti divyam. Okay. So who will read this? Shridhar Prabhu, one who at the time of death.
Hare Krishna Dandatpranam Madaji. One who at the time of death fixes his life between the eyebrows and in full devotion engages himself in remembering the Supreme Lord will certainly attain the supreme personality of Godhead. Gita eight point one zero.
Yeah, because we are actually, we have gone over time. So what we will do, Krishna tells us the same thing in Bhagavad Gita, yammyam vapi smaran bhavam, chajakantakalevaram. Sadatar bhava bhavitaha, right? Krishna tells antakali chama meva smaran mukthakalevaram. And then he tells, whatever you think you will attain that state. So whatever, what we will think at the time of death is what we will think is what we have been thinking throughout our life. When we are healthy, when we are living, when we are active, what is our consciousness? That will go as a flashback at the time of death. And when the flashback is full of devotional service, then we can't but remember the Lord at the time of death. So that is the perfection of human form of life and that is what we saw from the detailed study of Haridasa Thakur's. You know, it's one chapter in the entire thing, but it is the chapter that glorifies the passing away of Haridasa Thakur. Actually, it talks about the glories of Haridasa Thakur, there is one more chapter, it talks about the glories of Haridasa Thakur. But this chapter actually, because today is tirubhakti di, I took up this chapter. Because it talks about how the Lord is personally coming to serve the pure devotee, right? Who has perfected his life simply by chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare, Shahri Naam Prabhu Ki Jai, Shahri Naam, Sri Haridasa Thakur Kirabha Mahamohut Sava Ki Jai. Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. So we will do harinuppekli, harinam sankirtan, before that we will see the darshan of the devotees. Devotees can quickly show your darshan, darshan bhavitra kare, ye tumara gun. So wonderful to see all the Vaishnavas, thank you Sarbagopiishwari Madaji, Navkishori Madaji, Shridhar Prabhu, Jotsna Madaji, Chitra Madaji, Karpa Gavalli Madaji, Hemma Madaji, Anjanah Madaji, Deelanandri Madaji, Kalindi Parameshwari Madaji and all the devotees. Thank you very much for your association, Vanchakalpatarugya Schar. Kripa Sindhu Geevacha, Patita Naam Pavane Bhypi, Vaishnavah Bhypi, Namu Namaha. Anandakoji Vaishnavah Vrind Ki Jai Jagadguru Shri La Propaad Ki Jai, Shri La Guru Deva Ki Jai, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Okay, I can see Priyanka Sundrani Madaji and her little one, thank you very much. Kalindi Parameshwari Madaji, thank you for joining in. Sindhu Madaji, thank you for joining in, Hare Krishna. Sindhu Madaji, I can see, I can see only your hand. What kind of darshan is this? You have to give us proper darshan. Okay. Now she is giving us darshan of her fan. All right, all right. So let's quickly do Harinam Sangkiratan. Namah om Vishnu padhaya, Krishna prishaya bhutale, Shrimate bhaktive ranta. Swami neeti namine, namaste, tariswate deere. Gauri vaane prachariné, nirviseshā shunyavadi. Pakchakya dishakāri nē jaya, Sri Krishna jai tanyā. Prabhu nityānanda, Sri Advaita, kadalāra shiva sadhi, gauri bhakta vinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Jaya Gauri Nitaai, Gauri Nitaai, Gauri Nitaai jaya, Gauri Nitaai jaya. Jaya Prabhu Paad, Prabhu Paad, Guru Deva, Guru Deva. Nitaai Gauri Hari Bol, Gauri Hari Bol, Gauri Hari Bol, Gauri Hari Bol, jaya Gauri Hari Bol. Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Jagadguru Shri La Propaad La Guru Deva Ki Jai, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Hare Krishna. Thank you very much, dear devotees. Everyone can unmute themselves now in case anyone wants to share anything, any realizations, any prayers. I hope all of you have joined the sankalpa group and given your sankalpa for chanting extra rounds on this auspicious occasion of Shri Haridasa Thakur's tirubhakti di. Give me a thumbs up or you can say yes or raise your hands or in some way, you can tell me that you are all part of the group and you have given your sankalpa. Yeah, thank you. Hare Krishna. All right, Shri La Propaad Ki Jai. Thank you very much. We can continue our chanting session now. Hari Bol, Shri La Propaad Ki Jai, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Thank you, Dandatpranam.
Thank you Madaji.
Thank you so much, Madaji.
Madaji one doubt, Madaji.
Yes, Madaji.
Oh, one minute, Madaji, from my, Haridasa Thakur, previous pastime is he was Brahma Madaji, then he was, by God, he was come. Okay, yes, Madaji. Brahma was.
He requested the Lord and then he got birth as Haridasa Thakur in his next life. When he came as Krishna, he was Brahma, when he came as Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, he came as Haridasa Thakur.
Thank you, master. Thank you.
Hare Krishna, Shri La Propaad Ki Jai, Namacharya Haridasa Thakur Ki Jai, Anandakoji Vaishnavah Ki Jai, Kaligapati Padhavana, Hare Krishna Mahamantra Ki Jai, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Thank you, Hari Hari Bol.
Ki Jai.
Anandakoji Gauri Bhaktavrind Ki Jai, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Shri Shri Guru.
Thank you. Bangladesh is there, no? There, Haridasa Thakur and the.
Thank you, master.
Dandatpranam Madaji.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, correct. Hari Bol, yes. But the main pastime, this happened in Jagannath Puri, but yes, there are also pastimes in Bangladesh like that. All right, Hare Krishna, Shri La Propaad Ki Jai, Nitaai Gauri Prema Anande.